Week or more.
Yeah.
But it's just like, it's.
It is a good machine, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. The whole concept is low impact, but good cardio.
All right. Okay. I'd like to call to order our Riverdale City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. Please let the record show that all city council members are present with the exception of Council Merrill, who is excused tonight. We also will have members of the city staff as well as members of the public with us tonight. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and have a pledge of allegiance led by our police chief, Chief Brinkman.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Brinkman. We'll offer our invocation. Our most kind and gracious Father in heaven, we are grateful as we meet together tonight as leaders of Riverdale City, grateful for the opportunity we have to live in this beautiful city and many blessings that we enjoy here. And we ask that thou would bless us with thy Spirit, that as we make decisions, that we might have wisdom and be able to do those things that will be most beneficial for our residents, that we will be able to have the forethought and foresight to see how our decisions will affect the future, and that we might do those things that would be best. We ask a blessing upon all our Riverdale City employees tonight as they're out keeping their roads clear and also as they're out responding to accidents and doing whatever their duties might be, that they will be protected, that they might return home safely to their families tonight. We ask a blessing upon all our Riverdale residents, that they'll be protected, that they will have the things that they need, and that they will, um, that they will enjoy living in our beautiful city. And we offer this prayer, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
All right, uh, we now have a time for public comment. I don't see any, so we'll go ahead and move on to presentations and reports. Uh, for the mayor's report, I don't really have much tonight. Um, just a reminder that we do have the Utah League of Cities and Towns coming up. Ms. Maragon needs to know if we're going to attend, so she can get us registered. Um, city administration report, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, most all this is in your packet there. I do like to reflect upon the sales tax report each month, just because it's one of those ones that we keep a close eye on and we compare it to last year, just to give us an idea, actually in the previous years, to give us an idea of where we stand financially. And again, I would draw your attention into looking at that. We are down again this year, which has been pretty consistent for the last few months. And, um, you know, having sat through one of those LPC meetings today, the Legislative Policy Committees, and, uh, listened to the, the league and some of these bills that are being passed, I, I worry even more. And it's very troublesome because, as I mentioned to some of you prior to the, our work meeting, that, uh, new homeless bill is an example of that. And, um, it's just, it's scary when they keep taking these percentages of our sales tax, where Riverdale lives so and relies so heavily upon sales tax, when, tax, when you start taking, you know, 1.8 to 2.55% was the numbers they were throwing out today. Um, and, and just given the changes since even 2000, what they've done to our sales tax, I mean, it's, it's scary. And I don't think they think about that, the impact that that has, you know, that might be a small number to them, but someone who relies quite heavily on that like we do, and we don't have the population base to make up for it, those are huge hits. And they don't really seem to care much. And, and other bills like that, uh, the gravel pit one, um, all these things, that's taken money away from us. And it's just, it's, it's just one of those things. And, and we all know about 2030, um, we've got to be careful and we can't continue to live like we have in years past because the state's attacking us, you know, our numbers keep going down and things like that. I mean, it, it's, it's worrisome. So, uh, we need to be mindful of that as we go forth. And I don't want to sound all gloomy, but I had one of those days today, and that's just the start of it. So, and it hasn't stopped. I just hope I get home tonight. Okay. So, um, the other things in the packet, the, the department heads re, in there, do you have any, or any concerns about any of that stuff that might be included in that? As I mentioned, most are, well, not, there's most are, we got a few department heads who are here, but, um, if not, then I'll, I'll move forward. Um, our staffing authorization plan, uh, again, that continues. Those numbers are a little bit skewed, but I, again, another worrisome problem is we've had two more firefighters that we've lost here recently. Right after we hire two, we, we lose two. So, uh, the battle continues from all fronts. It just never ends. So, uh, we're still moving forward on that part, too. Some good news, our employee recognition. We only have two individuals on there, um, Officer Pippen with 19 years, and we don't recognize him on the, the odd, uh, celebration years, but I know he's got, does he have yours anywhere else? So he's over his 20 as well then. Um, this is always worrisome there, too, when we know they get over their 20, these older ones that are tier one, um, they could go at any day. And I know they all think of this, including both these individuals who are, who are on our list tonight, but, uh, we appreciate them and we, we surely hate to lose them. But, uh, kudos to, to Joel and, and his years of service. Our second individual is Officer McNeely, who is present tonight with his wife, and he is a sergeant, that's true. Sergeant McNeely, um, I remember when we were talking about five years, just seems like it was yesterday. That blows me away. But I remember when we, we stole him basically from South Ogden. It was kind of a coup in my mind because we got a, a very seasoned officer who has just been wonderful for Riverdale City. And, and, uh, we would love to keep Mike for another five or 10 if he'd stay. I don't know if his wife agrees to that, but we've, we've had to do some serious talking lately to keep him around here. So we appreciate him hanging with us as part of that, since that is a, a five-year celebration, we do have a certificate for him. So Officer Sergeant McNeely will have you come up here and, uh, your chief and the mayor, do you want to come down, Mayor? We'll present this to you.
I want to say just a few words. Um, Mike is a phenomenal employee. Um, when we brought him over, he'd, he'd worked tons of assignments over in South Ogden. And it's crazy to me that it's been five years. He wasn't here very long when he got promoted to sergeant. That's just because of his work ethic and all the great things he'd done in South Ogden, but here is, here as well. And so just recently, he, he actually had another job. He was gonna retire and luckily he decided he just loves us so much that he, he wanted to stay longer. But he, uh, we love him, everything he does. He's, he is a great employee and he is, you know, I always talk about just hiring good, solid people. And he is one of those guys. I mean, you can't ask for a better guy to have out there when your family might be having a struggle or in need of something. He's the guy that you want showing up and talking to your kids. Um, he's done a lot of work just recently with our, our new guys that we've just brought into the department and mentoring them. And it's, it's really important to have veteran leadership to help these guys through the bumps in the first few months that they go through. And he has really gone out of his way and taken time to pull people aside and have these little chats with them and build them up and be positive with them and, and really keep their morale high. So he does an incredible job for the police department and for the city. We're really fortunate, lucky to have him here. So we really appreciate everything he does. Congrats.
All right. And I'll, I'll say just a couple of quick words, too. Um, so the reason I remember when he was hired was because it was kind of a tough time for us. And I remember how excited everybody was to get you. And, uh, someone mentioned that it was a little bit of a coup when we got him. Well, I still take flak from the South Ogden mayor, and it's about him. Like, uh, you know, it's, it's not about anybody else, it's about him. So, uh, so you, you're very much missed over there, and we are really glad to have you. So, uh, you, you have been a great asset, uh, and you are one of those guys, you know, that's, we want to get good, solid guys in here. And, uh, the impact you can have on a city is huge. And so we're just so grateful for all your service here. And we've got a, a certificate here for you. Um, and then we also have a little gift for you. Um, you won't be able to hide it from your wife because she's here with you. So she knows about it. But anyway, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
What speech, Mike?
Do you have anything you want to say?
Right on the spot here. Thank you for the kind words. I really appreciate it, Chief. Um, the police department's administration has been fantastic. Uh, the city administration has been fantastic. The support that we get from the city council, everybody in the police department knows it. Um, it's something that's frequently talked about, not just amongst the line guys, but also the supervisors and the chief and the assistant chief. Um, again, thank you for giving me the opportunity, Chief, to come over and be a part of Riverdale PD. Um, I had a lot of great years in South Ogden, and hopefully I'll have a lot more great years here in Riverdale. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Mayor, I'll just quickly give a, a little community development report that's in the packet. Um, Home Goods, you know, is open. Chick-fil-A is now open. Um, Cheddar's, Cheddar's has been an interesting one. And I'm so excited to get them open. I just, but, uh, one thing, you know, we work with everybody. And I've started to tell developers as they come in and meet with us originally, we'll work with you, we'll bend over backwards for you. But we don't cut corners on inspections, especially when it's life safety issue. We just don't. And we've, we've had some trouble over there with, with some of these things. And I know they get frustrated with us, but we just don't cut corners on that because we can't. There's too much liability there. And so I know they've been pulling, not they, I think, uh, the contractors been pulling his hair out, but, I keep telling those guys to dig their heels in. We're not budgeting on that kind of stuff. And so to Jeff and Randy's credit, they do a phenomenal job at that. And hopefully they, they continue to do that because that, that protects us as a city and it protects us the people who will eventually go there and eat and things like that. Um, Fizz, I haven't heard much about Fizz lately. I'm not exactly sure where they're at. Sierra's getting close. Twisted Sugar, I believe, was shooting for next week. They're really close. Um, that one's moving good. And then Ameri Carpets, same with them. All them are doing well on there. I get feedback from both Randy and Woody, so I kind of know when we're getting close on those. So, um, that's kind of where we're at. I'll talk to you a little bit more about Shake Shack tonight in the RDA meeting because that pertains to that. So that's pretty much it on the community development. Anybody got questions on any of those? It's, it's just, we kind of saw last month it started to move. Everything kind of sits in the winter. Now it's starting as we get closer to spring, they're moving really good. So, um, hopefully we'll have all of them open here within just two or three months. Cheddar's was shooting for mid-March, so, um, and I still think we might make that, but, uh, uh, it's been slower than we wanted, but we're getting there. And you guys will like Cheddar's if you haven't eaten there. I really enjoyed that when I got the chance down in Florida here last month. That's all I had, Mayor.
All right. So, um, we are going to make a, just a quick change of the agenda because I saw somebody come in that has been making a big effort in the past weeks to be here. And I'm afraid he got hung up just a little bit with the snowstorm. So we are going to do some public comment for just a minute. Um, so we would open that public comment now. Please state your name and the city of residence, um, and try to limit your comment to about three minutes.
Thank you. Appreciate your adjustment accordingly. Name is Jim Packard, city of Riverdale, or residence is Riverdale. Uh, esteemed council members, it's good to see you again. I spoke to you, uh, I don't know, a year or so ago regarding the possibilities of a disc golf course change just to the northwest of the city buildings here. At that time, we convened a, a city, uh, like a safety brigade, or I don't remember what it was called, but we got together with the city administrator, various city representatives to talk about the possibilities. There were some concerns, and there were valid concerns about safety, possibilities of hitting the building, pedestrians, cars, et cetera. I come before you now to raise the possibility of a new option for disc golf using that same space. It would be more considered like an executive course, the, uh, pitch and putt sort of thing, where the, each hole would be only 45 to 120 feet long. The design would stay away from the buildings, away from the road, and away from any potential folks that might be walking along the trail across the street here. And so many of the things that I've considered, um, hopefully alleviate the concerns that were raised before. I've shared those plans or proposed plans and needed budget with Mr. Brooks, our city administrator. I've talked to the mayor about this as well. And so just raising awareness of this for the potential of having a conversation about it again in the near future as you're making plans for the coming year. I guess this is not the time to ask questions, but it's simply.
That's right. It feels like it is, but it's not.
That's fair. No, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And thanks for being here tonight and all your work. Thanks. Okay. Moving back on, we'll move on to item agenda F, consent items. Uh, we have one consent item, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the January 17th, 2023 council work session, the 20, January 17th council meeting, February 7th council work session, and the February 7th council meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All right. That passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to, uh, item number G, our action items. The first one is consideration of resolution 2023-10, declaring property as surplus and authorizing the sale of the same. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, this is just one of the processes we have to go through. Um, and we have, uh, uh, we have to come in and get your permission to surplus this, these things so we can move on with them. And so that's kind of what we're doing. You can see by the years of the vehicles, most of these are, are on a, a rotation there with both police and fire. Uh, community development as well has one, and then Public Works, Sean had a couple in the regular rotation there, as, uh, Officer, or Chief Brinkman mentioned before our meeting. Um, two of those were, were on leases, and then the other ones were just a couple of older ones that we've had sitting around. So we just need to dispose of them. We're no longer using them or going to use them, and we'll be replacing the ones that are in the regular rotation. So we just need you to authorize that, and then we'll move forward on them.
Any questions or comments? Counsel Arnold?
Move to approve res- resolution 2023, 2023-10, as stated within the packet.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Maragon, will you please poll the council?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Uh, action item number two, uh, has to do with the County Clerk's elections. And we're going to be delaying that, uh, item for another meeting, um, because there's been some updates to that. So we'll move on to item number three, consideration of resolution 2023-12, awarding a bid to Sidens and Martin Emergency Group for the repairs and improvements to the Riverdale Fire's brush truck. Chief Shawley.
Thank you, Mayor. So like I said in the work session, we've kind of evaluated over the years of replacing that brush truck. And as the prices have gone skyrocketed, we have reevaluated it and looked at the, maintaining the chassis, doing some of the minor repairs on the chassis and the lighting and the, in the truck itself. And then we'll, last year, we had the tank fracture, so that 300 gallon tank needs to be replaced. And we're also going to replace the foam system, actually get rid of the foam system. It's a bad maintenance situation for us. So there's going to be a lot of good upgrades to that. And hopefully by the time we're done, it'll be a, a new but used truck. So with some good improvements on it.
Any questions for the chief? Counsel Arnold?
Is this going to be a not to exceed? Um, I mean, you have, you have a number in here. Is that the number?
So the, the number is the 43,000 from Sidens. And then I added that 20% contingency on there because once we start diving in that electrical and a couple of other things, we may have some unknown bugs that we just haven't seen being a roughly, what, 22-year-old truck?
So if we, in the motion, we want to do not exceed the 54,969,25?
Yeah, that works.
Is that the amount? Is that what it is?
With that contingency on it, I think that's what it ended up being.
Okay. Or is that the other bid?
That's the other bid, 54,969 is the other bid.
Yeah. I think it'll be 43 plus 80, what, 8,200? Or what was your contingency?
8,600.
8,600?
My math says 51,6.
Now we get to do math.
51,6?
51,6.
YouTube. 51,6 sounds right.
So it was my math that was wrong. Oh, that's your executive summary.
Yeah, the second bid is.
Yeah, the, the.
It's in the resolution.
Resolution's correct.
Resolution is correct. So, good job. Thank you, Ms. Maragon.
I think it'll serve us well for another time period.
I think it's a good way to go. It's a, it's a truck without many miles on it and, uh, just upgrading the equipment on it and getting it kind of refurbished. It doesn't need to be going on the freeway a lot. It's just got to get to the brushy areas of Riverdale.
Yeah, we'd go I-1584.
Little bit. Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully driving to Provo.
We've got a couple mechanical issues we've got to fix, one little shifter in the tranny, but it's not going to be expensive. Should be okay.
All right. Any other questions for the chief? Counsel Arnold?
Move to approve resolution 2023-12, as stated within the packet, not to exceed $51,600 for this project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Maragon, will you please poll the council?
Yes.
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 All right. That passes unanimously as well. Very good. Thank you. We'll now move on to the comment portion of our meeting. Are there any, uh, comments from the city council for this meeting? Uh, any from the city staff?
No, we have none further.
So with Counsel Merrill not being here, um, had a little presentation with, with the comments for the, the youth council.
Oh, okay. Let's do that in the city. And, yeah, thank you for being here. Um, definitely. Jake and Rich, like, take a minute and give us some, uh, city, your, your city staff, those comments count, so.
So, uh, last Friday, was it? Friday?
Yeah, yeah.
That was too long ago. I can't remember already. Uh, the UC council put on activity where we could have the kids of the, of Riverdale City come and spend time with, uh, spend different games and make cards for the family, uh, Valentine's cards. Uh, while the kids were there, uh, we had large signs that they could sign, uh, for the police station and the fire department. And we went and delivered those signs, uh, with a small portion of our youth council. Uh, uh, the activity went pretty well. Uh, we think everybody had a good time. There was a really good turnout. Uh, we were able to service a lot of people and it was good to get their reactions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the effort you put in on the U.C. council. Like, we do appreciate that. Yeah. That's great. Yeah, I think we have fun activities. Um, and I, I know especially like the Halloween and, you know, the Easter icon, of course, you know, I think, like, they are very well attended. So thank you once again for all you do. Uh, I don't have any comments for this meeting, so, uh, a motion to adjourn would be in order. A motion and a second, all in favor? Say aye?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we're adjourned. Yes, fall into old habits. Okay, thank you. Now you be safe out there, fire and police. Like, we're going to move into our RDA board meeting.
I hear sirens.
I do.
All right. Well, let's go ahead and get started so we can get all you guys home before the roads get any worse. We'd like to welcome everybody to our Riverdale City RDA Board Meeting for Tuesday, February 24th, 2023. Um, please let the record show that all board members are here with the exception of Board Member Merrill, who is excused. Uh, we will skip public comment, seeing that there is no, or there are no members of the public here. There are no presentation reports. We will go to consent items. Number one, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the December 6th, 2022 RDA Board Meeting. Are there any questions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Very good. That passes unanimously. Move on to action items. Uh, the first one, discussion and possible action regarding the 550 West Riverdale Road RDA area. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, the little piece of property behind, um, what will eventually be Shake Shack and, uh, Panera. I think I can say that. I think, have we told you that?
No.
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 Maybe I shouldn't have said that. Um, the, uh,
Yeah, that's.
The developer on the old furniture place there is looking at bringing a Panera in.
It's never set. You guys know that.
Yeah. And we've already been pretty far down the road with, uh, Dee Hanson, who owns the corner piece. And what the hope was, because we get a lot of requests for this, but I need to, we're to the point where we've got to start making decisions here. Um, the hope is, and even in our discussions with Cetrubis's, in the development of Shake Shack, we've reserved enough of a, uh, alleyway there to punch that road through. And we really need Panera to go down because their back building is right in the way. Uh, Mr. Hanson's all in favor of it. Really, all of them are. And if you think about it, it's very beneficial to the city because the Riverdale Road Turn Lane right there that heads up into the terrace backs up that far. And when these businesses all get opened, um, Panera's only entrance is off of Riverdale Road. So without this alleyway there, they don't, they don't have access to, unless, you know, the backed up traffic eventually gets in there. It would help all of them, to be honest with you, including Cetrubis's, because it's going to back up to Brand's Way. Um, but I need to know how serious the council is because we've got to get creative with our financing here. One of the, the agreements and normally as an RDA, we would help contribute to some of the demolition. And both Cetrubis's and, uh, Panera have reached out to us for some help in funding some of that, as well as the, the cost to construct that alleyway. Um, Mr. Hanson's prepared and ready to get his engineers up there, um, to shoot that so we can get a better idea of what all this is going to cost us. Um, his hope was because, uh, E.K. Bailey will be his contractor on the back piece, the bigger piece back there, the, um, Larry H. Miller property now. And he wants to use their engineers and their contractors at the same time that that starts to develop. But that roadway is kind of crucial, and we've got to move on it now. Um, there's a couple of funding options we can look at, but again, it depends on the interest of the council and how badly you want that little road in there. Um, one of those, and this is probably the most creative, but, uh, as far as RDA funds, we've, we've exhausted both of those RDAs that are right there for the most part. There are some, uh, it, there's some housing-related funds that, uh, we reached out to our, I think I've expressed this to you before, but we reached out to our RDA attorney to see what all we could use those for. There's not a lot there, but there's a little bit. Um, and, and his opinion was that if we can tie it into housing, that we can use them on even a little roadway like this. And that's what a lot of this is, is to connect that housing that they will eventually put in back there to a way of getting out, and, and that would qualify. So whether or not we would use that, or ARPA, or whatever, um, I just need to know the interest of the, I guess it's the RDA Board about how badly you want that in there. Um, I know some of our past, both administrators and, and mayors and stuff are very, uh, supportive of this idea. Um, but we will have to do some things and the city will have to come up with some money to make this whole thing work. I think we've got the ducks all lined up to pull it off, but I'm going to have to come up with some funds to help with it. So that's kind of the discussion. I just kind of wanted to know what your thoughts were. If you told me, no, leave it alone, then we'd back off on it. If you wanted to go through, then we'll continue to pursue it. But just knowing that we're going to have to come up with some money here for this whole thing. And really, we're not buying that land from anybody. So that's why I'm doing this in a public meeting because it's not the purchase of land. But we will have to, we'll have to pay for some because their, their agreement is, okay, we'll let you punch us through, but we're not going to pay for any of this. So.
So you're talking about just putting in the road itself?
Right.
Help me. Two lanes.
It'll be narrow. It's only like 25 feet roughly, but it'll go through, right in through to Dee's property. And Dee's already agreed, when he put his in on the corner, he actually built his up because at that time, we didn't have any agreements going. So he built his up to make it more level, but he's already agreed to let us lower that one down because there's a big gap. Um, the, uh, the Panera piece will sit quite a bit lower. So we've got to figure out how we connect that from Cetrubis out on Brand's Way to Dee's on the corner and make that a smooth transition. Ketrubis out on Brand's Way to Dee's on the corner and make that a smooth transition. So there'll also be a little bit of rock work or at least.
About 260 feet?
Yeah, it's not very big. It's not big at all. So I don't think it's going to be overly expensive, but.
There's a little excavation and then the.
And the wall.
And, and I'm sorry, oh, the retaining one.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have to put something on there to retain that. But like I said, it's to make those, all three of those businesses, if, if you went up to J-Dogs when they did their grand opening, it was a nightmare.
You couldn't get out.
And this could punch that through and at least give you another way to get up that hill without sitting at the light all night. And all those people that are going to frequent those businesses can get out on the Riverdale Road down at the light if they follow the road right. So I think the benefit of the city is huge in my mind, but I need to know where you guys are at before we continue on this path. So.
Will it be private or public?
It would be privately owned. It's not going to be a public road.
They're not going to dedicate it and it doesn't.
Well, we haven't approached them about that, but I kind of doubt that all the parties would, to be honest with you.
We want it donated.
I mean, it wouldn't fit our standards.
No. And that's why I don't think we want to touch it. It's not going to fit our standards, but it does give you access and e, ingress and egress to all those businesses really.
Wouldn't you like a consensus?
No, I mean, we didn't list it on there. I just kind of need to know where you're at. If you guys are all giving me a nod and a thumbs up, then we'll continue on this path. If not, I'm going to drop the thing. So we're, we're, we're ready to roll. I mean, he's ready within the month that those engineers will probably be out there. So.
I, I can see some valid reasons that that needs to be there. I don't know. I guess, yeah, I, I can see the, there's, it's just, I'm visualizing it, not having a map or anything, but I just.
Well, the, the turn lane, just to give you more information, I should have brought a map down. The turn, turn lane heading up the hill goes back to about where Ketrubis's on the one end of their property. So even if we continued that turn lane back through Ketrubis's park property, if RDA or UDOT would do it, you only get back to Brand's Way and according to Sean, they won't do that because of the short distance on that road. So the only way you're ever going to alleviate pressure off that light is by punching this through. That's your biggest thing right there.
Is there ever a chance that that other road that's kind of drawn in, but not real will go up to 300 West up above?
Which one's that?
It's like.
Meaning instead of going down to 300, have kind of a.
They have 500 kind of showing like it might someday go up the hill. I don't know how they would.
I don't see that happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd take a lot of major work and you'd take up a lot of ground to get that accomplished.
Going to go there, I think.
Right.
Right. That's what, maybe that's why it's showing it.
They're looking at housing. They've also, in our discussions with them, have included some of the moderate income type stuff to include that. They know where we stand on that. And then we're even looking at connections to the apartments there. So there will be a number of improvements for the housing up there, which I think justifies us using what little bit of money we have left in those housing funds because it benefits all of it, including the apartments. But, and, and this is kind of, I know Cody's a little bit hesitant to use it. But our RDA attorney feels good about it. And I kind of look at that. I don't know what else we're going to use it for. And I don't know how long we leave it on the books. At some point in time, we need to get rid of that.
Well, don't we have to use it by 2024?
Yeah, that's the other thing is I think we're coming up on some deadlines on it. So I'd rather use it here if we could to make this thing work and punch that through. Even knowing that it's not ours. I mean, we would normally do that, the, the demolition and things like that. And RDA would, would usually pay for those kinds of things. So this is not out, outside of the realm of what we would normally do. A road we would, it depended if it was a legitimate road and worked, we would maybe insist on them dedicating that to us. But this one, we don't necessarily want. Nor do I think they want to. The nice thing about this is that those three businesses will enter into an agreement on that. And we're not necessarily involved in it. We're just a, a back party.
I, I know, I know myself, like, sitting at J-Dogs, I was like, oh, I wish there was a way to get over to Ruby River and, and come out there than staring at that downhill. You know, and being like, I guess this is the only way to get home. But
Yeah.
It probably won't be a perfect road because it is going to be small and it'll be like a drive lane and stuff. But man, if I could weave my way through that parking lot and get over to that light, I, I don't know. That's my thoughts, but.
Anything to improve the transportation.
I agree.
Area.
Good.
Because even if you go behind Hobby Lobby and cut by Tri Metal or whatever, the.
Right.
There's that little thing back there and not, shouldn't even talk about it in a public meeting.
Yeah, don't tell people. I use that too.
We all do.
It's a beautiful thing. And even if it's, it's not a, it's not a road. I don't think. But it's, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful little outlet that, that is needed because all along that, you, there is somebody that's trying to turn left.
Yeah.
All the time.
Yeah.
And it's like, you're, you're not going, I mean, this is crazy. Left there. So anything we can do, I'd be in support of that for sure.
Okay. Very good.
That, that's just what I, I wanted to know that I had your full support on that. We, we think it's very beneficial. I sat there at J-Dogs that night. First of all, I couldn't even find a parking spot, but when I finally did, I was right by that. And all those people turning left, I'm going, you're nuts. You are absolutely nuts. I'm, I'm in agreement with Alan on that. You will never get across this road. And so I turned up and went to shop going to the, when you know the roads, which a lot of the locals will know this one immediately. And so they'll take advantage of that. So, all right, we'll continue on with that. But, and we'll bring, once we know numbers a little bit better, we'll bring those back into, we just don't know at this point. But we have some, a lot of verbal agreements and handshakes that we haven't finalized yet. So now, now we'll move forward.
Okay. Uh, next action item, consideration to adjourn into a closed executive session pursuant to Utah Code 524-205. Consider the purchase or exchange of, or lease of real property. We would need a motion to go into a closed session. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Maragoni, will you poll the board, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
If I, if I, if they said yes, yes, no, no.
Do I need to close this door?